Okay, we're beginning the meeting tonight with a public hearing on the tentative village budget for 2018 and 19th against June 1st. Anyone from the public wishing to address the board on this or have questions pertaining to the budget may do so at this time. Any board members have any comments they wish to express at this time during the budget? Can do that also.
I'd just like to thank the treasurer for all his hard work and everybody else that works on the way.
Okay, there being no further comments on the budget, propose the public hearing, begin the regular session. Minutes of the previous meeting of April 2nd. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Make a motion to second of the people's second, be accepted as read, second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Bills, are there any bills to add to this, Arson?
We have two additions. First one is New York Power thirty, amount of eighty-four thousand seven forty-nine twenty-nine, that's our monthly bill. And the other one's business card for four twenty-eight, which is the train expenses for our COVID lockdowns.
Okay, what was the other one here for two hundred dollars on the first page? Third way down, right under the BSD?
That was for the Niagara Conference for our clerk.
Okay.
The other one just came in today, so.
Okay. Any comments from the board on the bills?
Yeah, I've got one question.
Yep.
It's listed under, two different pages, it's listed under CBA services, I'm sure, professional services, I know what that is, fourteen thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. How often do I have an asset, that amount?
What page are you on?
It's under the general, about third way down, then it's the first line in the electric budget. One's for eighty-six sixty-nine and the other one's for six dollars.
That's the, that's the audit that we had.
That was the item we have? How often do we have those, do you know?
Try to have them once a year.
Anyway, all right. Yeah, that's the only question I have, thank you.
Make a motion to approve the bill.
Okay, motion approved, in the second. In the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed, none, opposed, approved. Correspondents?
We have a letter from NIFON this evening, dated April 9th. Dear Ms. Boehmell, we are pleased to advise that we anticipate there will be no reduction in firm hydro energy sales to our hydropower customers for the period of May 1 through thirty-one, 2018. Forecasted May 2018 generation is projected to be sufficient to meet our firm hydropower customers' needs. However, if that generation is not sufficient, substitute energy will be purchased on your behalf for those customers with signed substitute energy agreements. Since hydro shortfalls may still be anticipated in future months, we remain prepared to provide substitute energy to assure continuous flow of the lowest cost power to you. To those customers who have executed a substitute energy agreement, the power authority will automatically purchase the substitute energy on your behalf in months that its shortage occurs pursuant to those agreements unless otherwise notified. The monthly price for substitute energy is an average of all substitute energies provided for firm hydropower customers each month. Current estimates are no shortage for July 2018 through November 2018. We will continue to analyze more current data monthly and provide this type of rolling six months forecast each month. Please note that there were no unanticipated inter-month curtailments requiring real-time purchases in March. However, when such incidences arise, NIFON will provide information regarding the curtailments and any cost impacts to all firm hydropower customers. If you have any questions, please contact Brandon Cole. Sincerely, Keith Hayes, Vice President, Economic Development. This is informational.
The reason I asked the clerk to share this with everybody, apparently we get a letter like this periodically.
Generally monthly.
And what I wanted to point out at this time is that we're in real good shape with the hydro allocation if we don't tip bone over with other heavy demands on our electric system. I thought it was kind of timely to have this in and explain to the public why we're taking steps that we're trying to take, that'll come up later in the meeting about the cryptocurrency issues. But since we're right where we need to be on the hydro allocation and we're not going to be using very much nuclear power, it looks like, so anyway, just for the record. Anything else?
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'd like to surplus our two thousand, no, yeah, we'd like to surplus our two thousand New Holland four-wheel drive extended hull back hull. And I need a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise for this. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, is that all we need to pursue this?
Just for a length of time, how many days you want it, May 4th?
Did we set a date when it has to be opened?
May 4th, so they'll be ready for the next meeting.
Say run it the rest of the week here, all right, three, four days this week? I would, yeah? Okay, we'll see how that works.
Okay, thank you.
Now, how far is that going out?
With advertisement with Peyton Press Republican?
Oh.
I don't know, you could probably put one in the Sun also. I mean, that goes to every house in Clinton Essex and Franklin County, I believe.
And their website.
And put it on our website. Any other ideas? This is good, okay. Okay, we need a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise for a purchase, to go out to bid for a pickup truck. This is kind of time sensitive right now because we're running out of literally a week or so when they can still order trucks. So, I wrote general specifications for it for Ford or Chevy, I went to three different dealers to get the story on this, and they all have different packages for state contract fitting prices and stuff like that, so we need authorization to advertise for bid for this truck. This is just one of the pickup trucks that we're going to hopefully replace this year, but this one is kind of critical right now because we need to replace the one that's done at the central garage, hopefully before summer starts, so anyways, I would like a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to authorize the clerk to go out for advertising. Advertise for the truck.
Okay, and the second, trustee LeBlanc. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, now, second thing, so she's been advertised for four days.
The remainder of the year.
And then, we're going to open the bids on Friday, this Friday, at 1:00 PM in the village office on Lake Street. Hopefully, we'll be able to get one, because it's going to take a while if they order and it's going to take a while to get it after they order, it could be a month or two. On the other hand, somebody might come up with one already built someplace, so anyway, we'll get the bids and see what they are.
What year, eighteen?
2018.
2018.
Mm-hmm. If we don't like what we got, we can, just, the other truck that we're going to buy, the plan is in the budget, we, there's a lot of equipment in this budget that's going to be purchased this fiscal year coming up. All of them were funded without regard to revenues from sale of surplus equipment. So, in other words, there's a back hole in there that's funded to buy the back hole by itself. We sell the other back hole, that's revenue coming in that we can use in another area. In the, particularly in the wastewater treatment plant, their equipment is funded, the trade-in value that we get for the equipment that's going to be surplus later this summer will probably go towards buying them a new pickup truck. But by then, we'll be able to actually bid one out, that will be a 2019, I'm imagining, and that'll just be a straight bid for everybody, and we'll be able to spike out exactly what we want and get it when we need it.
I see Arson over there with maybe a question on him about this money, we can't jump around departments like that, can we? Just take money and go here and there?
We're not doing that at all.
You mentioned the sewer department and they've taken proceeds from other things.
No, 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 the sewer department, when they sell the gale, the skid steer and all that stuff, after they get the replacement equipment for that, those items will be surplus. The funds, the revenues derived from the sale of those wastewater treatment plant specific equipment will stay in the wastewater treatment plant budget.
Right.
And then, we're going to use that to pay for the pickup truck.
I would just listen in back though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, that's the other department.
Yeah.
Okay, so, just, yeah, I'll make a note that the entire bid package is available for review at the village office, and we've also sent it out to a number of, or we will send it out to a number of dealers. Okay, next item, budget resolution. Resolution adopting a budget for fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2018 and ending May 31st, 2019, making appropriations for the conduct of the village government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. Whereas, Board trustees has met at the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard, therefore be it resolved that the tentative budget as herein after set forth is hereby adopted. The several amounts stated in the column entitled Final Budget Adopted in Schedule 1A through Schedule 2EE, together with amounts set forth in a budget summary by fund found on Page 4, are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified. The salaries and wages stated in Schedule 6, Pages 40 and 41, are effective June 1st, 2018 for all employees. The union employees' salaries and wages are negotiated through a signed labor contract with Civil Service Employees Association Incorporated. This resolution shall take effect immediately, and I move that to the floor for a second.
I'll make a motion to adopt that, second.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dard?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee LeBlanc?
Aye.
And mayor votes aye. Okay, the budget is adopted. Now, we have a lengthy budget modification courtesy of Arson. This is budget modification resolution number 2018-12. Whereas the board of trustees deemed it, well, first, before I do this, Arson, could you just give us a general overview of what this is, because I'm not going to read every specific line on here?
Right, basically what we're doing is, well, obviously, the police department, you know, we eliminated the police department, so we're putting the money back into reserves, but any decrease is, you're taking the money, basically, you put it into the next, into the budget that you just adopted. Any increases is, it's to correct the overage in current budget.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone clear on that?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas the board of trustees deemed it advisable to make certain modifications to 2017-18 village budget, bid therefore resolve that the treasurer is authorized and directed to make the following modifications to the budget, village budget for fiscal year 2017 through 2018. It's going to be, general fund revenues is going to increase by eighty-eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars. General fund appropriations are going to increase by, decrease by one hundred and ninety-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Is that correct, Arson, I didn't read the right line there?
I got one hundred and thirty-eight six three in my paper.
Well, that's going, I went way down, I'm up two lines above that.
Oh, you really just do the net result?
Okay.
That's easy.
Net result is increase in estimated revenues is eighty-eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars, decrease in appropriations is one hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty dollars, and decrease in appropriated fund balance is one hundred and forty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Okay, I'd like a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion, will you approve this? Resolution is read?
Okay.
Second?
Motion in the second. Roll call vote, trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dard?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee LeBlanc?
Aye.
The mayor votes aye. Okay, now, I've included in here a new organizational chart that I put together, all of the trustees have a copy of it, I just found my copy, so you don't have to put one in my box.
Thank you.
It basically lays out who's responsible to whom, and all the employees and all the departments are covered on here, it's yours, we can remember them all, so. If your department isn't on here, I don't exist anymore. No, we've got them all on here and it's, I don't know, I think it's pretty well streamlined. Okay, trustee Arnold, do you have anything tonight? You do.
Yes. The library, I talked to Suzanne today and she's got a five hundred dollar donation from Stewart's for the KISS program, which I thought was very nice, and Stewart very knew that.
Yep.
Yeah, and I talked to Tim today after the sewer plant, and things are running well up there, and it's very, very clean up there, spotless, I'll tell you, he does a good job on that, him and his group.
Which is something to say about a wastewater treatment plant, just in general.
Yeah.
He does a good job up there. I see the water plant's got the DEN and stuff.
Yep, since the last meeting.
Yep, and the skid unit should be in this week?
I contacted Mr. Emrick after you were in today, and he has confirmed that those units have not yet shipped, they are going to ship on Wednesday. They came across some problems while they were doing their programming and testing, and it set back their delivery date.
Okay.
But that delivery date is now set for, they're going to be sent out on Wednesday.
All right, okay.
And I will be contacting him Wednesday to make sure that they were sent out on Wednesday.
All right, good, thank you, Ryan. Jellinaw.
Electric crew and the public works crew did some cleaning in the garage and water tank building, did an excellent job cleaning, something, I think they should be recognized on that, that's quite a job that was pretty well needed and stuff like that. And I went to, for the rec center, I went to base to see if they could change the color of the paint on the five gallon bales and stuff, and that's the color, you can't, can't change an oil-based paint, you have to order it or stuff like that.
Okay.
But it can be used other places if we don't want to.
I'm sure we'll use it for something.
Yeah, so, that's all I have today, tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Should we move on to executive session?
Oh, yes, I'll do that after, no?
No?
You'll have to deal with one of your departments. Okay, executive session on water plant personnel, please.
Okay, I think we might already have that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the motion request the executive session, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Trustee Dard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the four things you talked about tonight, first thing, I'll get out of the way, I'm also requesting the executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, as you mentioned earlier, Mr. Mayor, we have reached a contract with the union and just here's a brief overview of the union contract. They were awarded pay raises as agreed to by all parties, an extra wage increase to employees with a Class D water license, and we're going to limit the village to three employees in this working class, so we'll have three workers in the streets department that will have their Class D license. We're allowing the employees a little room in purchasing clothing from different quality outlets. We increased some longevity years, we're increasing performance evaluations to two per year. That way, if a person has got a problem, supervisor's got a problem, or an employee has another problem with another employee, then it can be brought to, you know, the department's attention, and twice a year, we'll have a chance to evaluate them and, you know, fill out the standard form or whatever. I'm also a firm believer that on these satisfactory and non-satisfactory forms, I can't see how everybody can be straight, one hundred percent, or straight rate in the whole. I think some thought ought to be put into it, if department heads are doing that, to give a real, a fair evaluation of your employees. Okay, we took care of other housekeeping requirements and other matters in the union contract, and the contract passed one hundred percent overwhelmingly. I don't even want to go there. Data mining, and other businesses fall under this category of business. We've asked our administrator to contact the village attorney to draft a moratorium to look into and to allow the village not to have such enterprises at this time, those wanting to operate within the village or else's point. These would be, I would take it, these would be new, non-existing businesses, but the, our administrator can correct me on that. Such a moratorium, I don't know legally how far we can go out, I've asked for twenty-four months with extensions, so we don't have to go out for another moratorium if we don't find those businesses to continue, not to be in the best interest of our residents. So, I'd just like to have extensions as granted by the board of trustees if needed. Our attorney should have the boilerplate influence on such, since they probably wrote the moratorium, being they are the legal firm or the city class group?
No, they're not.
They're not?
No.
Okay, they are on other, other things, but not this, okay. This request can be based on things, but only, but not limited to, time to allow the village to get further advice or more info that is ongoing from the New York State Power thirty, the municipal electric utilities association, and others, to get assessments of health and safety concerning such businesses, and if applicable, how and if the wants, how and if the, the village wants to make a permanent ban on such businesses. Our administrator, Mr. Peters, will have more on the topic of cryptocurrency in a few months. Last thing I've got is, we have a pretty ambitious work schedule, as I've been listening to the department heads, and I'm requesting the, our clerk to send out an email to all department heads. The board would like to have a work schedule of anything that's going to take more than two days, so if it's going to take three days, a week, two weeks, a month, any, anything ongoing, we'd like to know about what's happening, because we may be able to assign additional personnel to different departments to reflect the work. I know this building needs extensive work, the village office building needs cement reporting, painting, and there are a host of other issues going on that we're going to have to address this year, so we'd kind of like to have personnel ready, so in order to do that, then we'd also like to know what you guys are doing for anything that lasts any more than two days. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Menard?
I have nothing for the season.
Trustee LeBlanc?
The fire department has sent their information about their appointments for the upcoming year. In fact, I'll just read out if you want the appointments.
Yeah.
I got this from Dennis Roberts, secretary of block army hose hook and ladder number one. They plead to advise our annual election office until April 3rd, 2018, if all members were elected by our membership to serve as chiefs until April 2019. Chief Mike LeBlanc, first assistant chief Junior Moore, and second assistant chief Kevin Shagnon.
Okay, these are the three department officers that require board approval, like a motion to approve them?
So, second.
Okay, a motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Okay, they are approved. The clerk will notify the fire department by letter. Also, we received, oh, are you here? The?
Fire advisory board.
The fire advisory board and EMS board, which are, they're just listed on the appointments of the planning board members, zoning board members, stuff like that, and we didn't have any time to make the list before, but we've got them now, so. I don't recall, don't believe that requires any action by the board.
That's done by the fire chief.
No, no, but I mean, on the, on the list that we have?
Number one, you need to, yes, you need a motion in the second to approve those.
Okay, okay, I need a motion for that.
A motion to approve this.
Okay, read them, second?
Second.
Discussion?
Okay, discussion.
Just the fire advisory board, the delegate is Mike LeBlanc, the alternative delegate is Kevin Shagnon, and EMS advisory board, the delegate is Walton Laramie, and the alternative delegate is Julie Kirby.
Okay. That's, that's what we're voting on?
Yes.
Okay, no question.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Normally, we put this out on our organizational meeting, last week would have been on the list of all the, you know, like who the village attorney is and the budget officer and all that stuff, so anyway, just catching up on that. Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, other reports. Arson, do you have anything?
No.
I'm going to leave the administrator for last, because he's got a lot of stuff to talk about. Mr. Jellinaw?
I'd just like to report that we've been working on one of our items filters, now that the staining is cleaned off, we can see that it's actually in relatively good condition, there are a few rough spots that are going to have to be seen to, and the paint coating is going to have to be reapplied in some areas, but in general, the filter itself is sound and in good shape.
Does it need to be welded?
There are some areas along the edge that are going to need welding, I don't think there are any significant spots inside the filter vessel other than just on the edge where the gasket sits that will need welding, and it looks like only maybe two or three spots, a couple inches wide.
Okay, and then, the filter stones, I know that they've been pressure washed, are they done, are they ready to be put back in?
They've been pressure washed, I would like to clean up the ends still on those, just to get a assessment, see if the hardware still looks good. It looks okay, but it may need a little bit of touch-up painting. I am also going to have to order some paint, special tooth part epoxy for that, I was just waiting to get some information and some pricing information on that, and I have that now, so I'll be ordering some paint to do some of that work.
Okay, will we be able to have these, that filter reassembled by the end of the week?
Uh, no.
We're working on it for two weeks now.
No, we'll have to order the paint, and then, once the paint gets in and is applied, it's going to be another seven days while the paint cures, so.
That's just for the inside of it?
Yeah, that's the paint that we have to use on the inside of the filter.
In the meantime, the ends of the stones can be?
They can be cleaned in the meantime.
Completed and complete?
Yeah.
And that, also that, I think on the top of the holes in it where the stones fit in?
That will also need to be repainted, that's.
Okay, that gets epoxy paint also?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be all cleaned up very soon, ready to be painted.
That can be done this week, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then, we're planning, now we're delayed another until the end of the week to get the skid units?
Yeah, I don't actually have a day when it's going to be delivered, I've been told that they're sending it out on Wednesday.
Uh-huh. Okay, because we'd really like to get that put together, well, we've got the public works crew available, because any minute now, they're going to be outside for the next six months, so.
Yeah, not only that, we're going to, we're going to cut a hole in the top of that, they can put an air valve in the top.
Yeah.
Instead of on the side, I think the air valve in the top is better than the side.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe send that lid out maybe this week while you're waiting for the paint to have, or are they going to come over and weld it here?
Well, I have to have Jesper assess that for, for putting in. Well, I have to have Justburger assess that for putting a nipple on there and give us a price. I would think it would be easier to weld it in place. It's large and very heavy. It would be difficult to get out of the building and then back in. So I think it would be easier for it to be done in place. And he's not very far away. He's just over the bridge.
Yeah.
We have gaskets and everything lined up, ordered, ready to go?
We have the gaskets. We need to reassemble this filter, yes.
We need to reassemble. We have them all.
Yeah.
Okay.
We needed a few more, and Pfizer was able to assist with fabricating the ones we were missing.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
I'm wondering, you're going on vacation pretty soon, right?
Yes, Thursday.
I'm wondering if we should, I'd like to see this Adams filter completed as we plan.
Right.
And get the chlorine skid units in as we plan. I'm wondering, the next step in this was to disassemble a second Adams filter and clean it up and just have it prepared for results on the Tycon Droga conversion project of theirs. And if it's feasible, we have ours ready to go. Now, I'm wondering if maybe we should do preliminary research into finding out about an engineering study to see if it would be, what it's going to cost us to do all four Adams filters to put them back online versus taking all four of them out and maybe adding one additional industrial-type filter, new, to replace them? If that might be the way to go. If we're getting up in like $100,000 range, we might be right on the bubble where it might be worth?
Yeah. It would be, it would be wise to do that before we invest any more money in it. I think as we've discussed, it's just due to the stones and the gaskets. We're looking at around $25,000 per filter vessel. And there are three more that we would have to do beyond the one that we've tried to rehabilitate already.
But on the other hand, we're not really planning to go that route. We're more thinking we're going to go with that bag system like Tycon Droga is doing experimentally right now. But we wanted to wait to see the results of the cost and the, if it works or not.
Yeah, I believe that the best course would be to get the one we're working on back together.
Yes.
And then touch bases with Tycon Droga and perhaps AES and see how that project is coming, where they are in it.
Yeah.
They had not assembled the filter when Trustee Arno and I went down there yet. They were still waiting on their screens. So I'm not sure if they've got one up and running yet or not.
Yeah, well, I don't expect, even if they had it running tomorrow, we'd still want to wait a couple of months to see if it's worked. But what I would like to ask you to do is do this, these things simultaneously. Like, reassemble the Adams filter like we talked about. Disassemble the second one and start cleaning it out, but not expend any funds on it and not put it back together, just leave it empty. Wait to see how Tycon Droga is doing. And also, look into feasibility and cost estimates of what an engineering firm would charge to do a feasibility study for us. I guess that's what we're looking for, is a feasibility study to replace the whole Adams system. If it would be cheaper to do that than refurbish the Adams system, either the old way or the new projected way or proposed way.
Okay.
Okay, and kind of do that all at once?
Yeah, we can do a lot of that simultaneously.
All right. Anything else you want to bring to our attention?
Just to note that the people from Custer are coming up tomorrow to program our autodiler.
Good.
So do final line hookups and program it. Teach us how to do that as well. Other than that, there's nothing else to report.
Got a question on the industrial side of the filters. Three weeks to a month ago, Mr. Profeder gave me the opportunity to look inside one of those?
Yes.
As the rack was pulled out in each one of the filters?
Yeah.
He stated to me at that time that a filter order, or filters ordered were not the right size?
No, what happened is we ordered the filter bags.
The bags, yes.
Right. And our filters are the oldest industrial filters still in operation.
Okay.
And so they are working from their original specifications, but they sent us a test bag to put on to make sure that everything lined up properly. Because they don't build them exactly the same way anymore.
I thought we did this test bag thing a year or two ago.
Uh, we did.
And we were supposed to be all set, weren't we? Have the right-sized bags?
Well, except that they did not obviously keep whatever those specifications were.
Oh, I see.
Because they sent us a bag and it was not correct. They sent us a second test bag and it was mostly correct, but there were some seams that were not properly sewn. So with that feedback, we now do have the proper bags and the end gaskets that we need to replace.
So you can take down the information in case they lose it again?
Um, I don't know how to notate that. I really would have to send them another bag, which is what I did this time. Actually, I saved one of our old bags and sent it to them, and it still wasn't right.
All right. Are they very expensive, Brian?
They are, actually, yeah. They're two hundred and?
If there's one hundred, we should keep one full set on the shelf.
Two hundred and thirty or $240 per bag.
There's six in there?
Uh, sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah, per filter.
Yeah, two filters. So I guess we could really keep a whole set on?
No, not for that.
How often are they replaced?
Every other year, we do each filter. So they're a two-year cycle.
So every year, you're buying a set of those bags then?
Yeah.
Sixteen, every year we go through?
Yeah.
Might be, might be a good idea, maybe you order like 24 at a time.
Well, this last?
Or no, excuse me, half? No, yeah, you have to buy 16 a year and then buy an extra eight so that within two years, we have an extra set. Then we'd be one ahead all the time when we order them.
Sure, we could do that. Yeah, we certainly wouldn't order less than 16. This last time, we ordered two complete sets of bags because they're really part of refurbishing that system. It's sort of the, one of the endpoints in that upgrade is to replace all the bags as well. And at that point, they'll be running at the best efficiency that they can.
Do we have grant money left over to buy these bags?
Um, we, this set of bags, these two sets of bags were bought on the grant.
Okay.
There is grant money left. The administrator and I have been discussing possible ways that we can utilize that in rehabilitating the water plant.
Yeah.
That's certainly something we can consider.
Okay, 24 bags at a time.
And I noticed also today, they installed some of that piping?
Yes.
Couple of. Do you have a little more on that to do, a couple more pieces?
And one, one piece of pipe that's going to replace a piece that got put in that wasn't quite the right length.
Uh-huh.
And that will be done when we take that system down to replace all the bags.
Okay.
It'll be offline for that week, the best part of that week anyways. And so that's a great opportunity to get in there and change that one piece of pipe back. Other than that, though, I believe all the piping is in.
Good.
Brian, years ago, they used to take and take the bags. Do you have an idea? Like when Grant Conkright worked there or whatever? In the book, I'm sure he wrote it down in the book, when they changed them and stuff like that. He used to bring them to the laundromat in laundry room.
To the laundromat or to a dry cleaner?
Or dry cleaners, whatever.
Yeah.
And have them cleaned and stuff.
We could certainly try that as long as the bags are not too damaged when we take them apart. The last ones that I rebuilt, they were abraded at the top where the pressure washer hits them. And so they would have, they would have been compromised.
Okay.
If the sets that we take out when we do the next rebuild is not compromised, we can try to get them laundered and see if they come back. They probably would not last as long, but the dry cleaning will certainly be cheaper than replacing them, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Graves?
I just want to thank Mr. Arno for the compliment. And we'll pass it on to the boys. Other than that, just getting informational stuff together to bring to you guys.
Okay, thank you. Jess, do you have anything for us?
I'm working on some various quotes after talking with the administrator. Actually, our four quotes are ready for park benches, so I'm moving quickly with those so we can get that done sooner or later before the season really starts. Did look into quotes on paint as well. So I have one quote already from Ace. They're willing to give a pretty good discount actually on the amount of paint we would need. But I am looking into Sherwin-Williams and Lowe's as well to see if we could do five-pound buckets, which would be cheaper than five gallons, but Ace doesn't provide that. So we are working on that. A lot of goal plans, looking at painting. I started to establish RecDesk as that software that we had discussed that would help with scheduling and the public communication. Starting to launch that. Just a little kinks that I have to work out with representative who showed us the demo and stuff. Hopefully, I should have those kinks out by the end of the week. And RecDesk should be, I won't say fully operational. We'll have to do a lot of entering and data into it. But by the beginning of next week, we should hopefully start being able to utilize it and then get a feel for it and see if it's going to suit our needs. And getting a timeframe of how long exactly they're going to let us use it for, really talking with the RAP to make them understand that each season's different. You know, there's a busier time and so hopefully they'll extend that service so it's not something that we would have to worry about within this budget year, which was that initial plan. As far as going on inside the building, we're still kind of, we're finalizing those bigger projects that we have started to do, waiting for the weather to stop raining so we can get outside and start everything and go from there. But it's kind of where we're.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Felkey?
I have nothing.
I think I rang him out today.
That's just not the last of them.
I got a question for Brian. Brian, has this rain impacted sweeping our streets or how are we going with that?
Yes.
Yes, I thought.
Yeah, it shuts us down and makes it into mud.
Yeah, I thought so. Thank you.
So. And Peter, what have you done?
Yeah, just one thing. On your desk in the official record is my report from the meeting on Friday that Senator Little had called for all the low-cost electricity provider municipalities that exist in her district, which includes Lake Placid, Tupper Lake, Mucina, Plattsburgh, and Raucus Point. So there are representatives from each of those communities there to advise the senator and to explore issues, share knowledge, discuss various solutions for this cryptocurrency issue. It's been plaguing all of these communities in various ways. And I can report that I think we've been amongst these communities, we've been impacted probably one of the least at the moment, largely, I think, due to the way that our grid is set up and how things are buried underground. That's really changed how we are approached for this. So we're in a, in a better spot, I think, than other communities. The, the moratorium that we're pursuing is widely agreed upon as the right way, the right thing to do. These other communities, the only one that's done it right now is Plattsburgh. The other three, in addition to us, will be doing it very soon. So we're going to be right in line with their, with the pace that they're on as well. There was a substantial amount of information that came out of this, and I'd be happy to talk with you or anybody else about it, probably offline because I could stand here for 45 minutes probably and go over a lot of the details. A lot of it's in that report that's available. But the consensus really was to kind of initiate proactive and regional approach to this so that no one community is standing on its own. So we're going to try to share as much information as we can and put ourselves in a stronger position overall. There was a lot of talk and a lot of discussion about the benefits of this type of activity as well. While this, these companies don't bring jobs and use a tremendous amount of power, there are investments that they are willing to make according to these other communities to try to offset their influence in one way, shape, or form. There was some discussion on win-win solutions, or in this case, win-win-win solutions, various taxing degrees, degrees of taxing entities and, and things like that that were discussed. All of them are major systems changes, in my opinion, which I think are kind of fairly difficult to implement, but then again, could have substantial positive benefits too. But all that said, what we have to do at the moment is certainly get that moratorium in line and, and then stay proactive and keep moving forward. In other words, passing a moratorium does not mean we don't have to think about it anymore. It's really the beginning of trying to serve the community the best way possible with this type of thing. Basically, there's a lot of money behind it around the world, and many people are kind of standing at the doorstep wanting to throw it at us. It's just that we have to obviously put the residents first and try to make sure that they are benefiting solely from whatever arrangements we make. That's what we do. So we just have to stay aware of this, stay involved in all the conversations, and, you know, try to, try to, you know, stick with the regional approach, as I mentioned before.
Now, when we pass a moratorium, is that a resolution or a law?
It's a temporary law.
Okay. And the attorney, our village attorney is going to work that up for us?
Yes.
Can you give me an indication of how long it would take him to do that?
Uh, no, not yet. So we've been throwing questions back and forth. I mean, basically, we can, we can write it. What I'm concerned with is the, is the process. Because we, in any case, we don't want to, you know, screw up a moratorium. But certainly in a case like this, we want to make sure those i's are dotted and t's are crossed, double-checked. So all I'm doing right now is, you know, we have the language. Plattsburgh did it already. Our lawyer will review that anyway, but we're not going to ask them to write it again because it's already been done. In fact, the other communities are taking this exact same language and using it there as well. So we're all following through on that, in that way.
Hey, would it be feasible to do this on Friday? Pass this on Friday when we have the other meeting to open the bids? Because I believe the clerk will be advertising that we're having a meeting on Friday, right? So if we get this in on the same, same time, if you can get it together in three days?
I couldn't speak for the attorney and what their schedule is. I know that we can write the moratorium in that amount of time, but we do need a public hearing first before passing that local law. So we could establish that date at some point. We could announce that potentially for the public hearing. And then we have to have a public hearing and then have, and then pass the moratorium after that.
So are you saying we could have the public hearing on Friday?
No.
You could announce your?
You could announce it.
Okay, I'm just trying to get this so we don't have to wait till a whole other board meeting.
I believe you have to have the public hearing on the moratorium as it is finally written, as it's been written, formed, complete before you have a public hearing.
Okay. So we can have that for the next, the next village board meeting then?
I think that's feasible, and if we have to change that, we can.
Can we pass it at that meeting?
No.
Okay. I was thinking like a budget meeting, where we have the day and then after we had comments, then we pass it?
I don't think so.
No.
We can look into that and make sure we're doing that right.
At least, so we can't do anything officially before the next village board meeting?
Correct.
To get this rolling, but we can between now and then get it written in final form and blessed by the attorney?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I've got, just to acknowledge some resolutions. I looked at the electric boiler moratorium that we have, and there was a resolution attached to it. So whether or not we need it, I don't know. But I'm just advising that there was a resolution attached to that. I have a copy of it. That was a moratorium. That's all.
All right. Okay, did I miss anybody? Anybody? Okay. Comments from the public? Open the meeting to the public to address the board on any topic they so desire? Mr. Cooper, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Anyone else?
Make a motion, Lieutenant?
Uh, we need to make a motion. We go into executive session. We need to, we need to.
Resess.
Resess.
And then go into exec. So I need a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take a brief recess and then we'll go into executive session.
I hear something. They do a lot of homework before they get here.
A lot behind that bit.
I bet, keeps you on the door.
I would never know that stuff. They do a lot of work.